I would now call this, the meeting of Nelson City Council, July 2nd, 2018, to order. Mr. Chan, would you give our, move your hands, please?
Good Lord, thank you for all you've done for us. I pray to be with each person represented in this room and help us make the best decision for this city and the people in the city. Be with all our safety workers, our firemen, police, military, ambulance drivers, everybody, all our workers in the city. Give everybody a safe travel home and thank you for everything you've done. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you all have a copy of the agenda recording? Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to amend it to number 11 to 7C, to the executive session.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
To 7C?
Yes. Who was the second one on my phone? Check. Do I need a motion to approve it?
No, approve it.
No action to approve it? Second. All in favor? Can I get a motion to approve the June 20th council meeting work session minutes? Can I get a second?
Wait a minute. Well, we're on the 20th, sorry.
Where am I?
You were ahead of me.
So we approve? No, that's right. We approved the minute earlier.
The 20th got approved, the 4th A. You said June 28th, June 4th.
No, June 4th. And then, so we approved that one. And now we're on June, we're on the June 20th, which is the work session.
Okay.
And I needed a motion. And Kelsey made it. No, I need a second. Second by David. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now we'll move to the public hearing for the 2018 Cherokee County Milledge Rate. Address that.
Do we need a motion to open the public hearing, or?
If there's anything you want to say before we open the public hearing, go for it. And then we can open it.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I? The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input in regards to the 2018 Cherokee County Military. Included with this is the PT 31, excuse me, 32 dot 1, computation of milledge rate rollback and percentage increase in property taxes, as well as the current tax digest and five year history of levy. There are copies of this in the lobby for those in the audience who would like one. As with last year, we are not raising taxes, we are doing a rollback which equals a zero percent increase.
Okay, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll see.
All in favor? Do we have any comments? This is where we have comments for this, right? Okay. Do we have any comments from the, from the, from the audience?
I believe you were the only one. Let me check, there's a sign she put up. I believe Mr. Kellett was. It threw me off. I thought you were over there signing up. No one signed up to see.
Any comments? I can read them. Need a second? All in favor? Okay. All right. So it's to department reports. Tina Martin, would you like to give the city reports?
Okay. There is a reconciled statement of revenues and expenditures and a reconciled trial balance report ending May 31st, 2018, included with this report. Extra copies of this are available in the lobby. Mr. James Queen and I went to the bank on Friday, June 29th, and opened a cash reserve account. Ninety-one thousand eight dollars was transferred from the fund balance in the general fund account into the cash reserve account, so we are now compliant with our policy on this item. Maintenance. Mr. Fossett is on vacation this week, but Mr. Long is going to come in a few days in order to keep the maintenance department from getting behind. I didn't put it on here, and I don't think they'll mind, but I wanted to make an announcement for everybody, just to say that God is good. Ricky got his test results back today and he is in complete remission. So. Sanitation. Quarterly sanitation bills will be going out next week. Along with the bill, we will be sending out notifications of the citywide dumpster days, which will take place from July 21st through July 29th. That is two weekends and a full week in between. Information on the upcoming work session meeting. The work sessions normally take place on the third Thursday of the month, which is July 19th. Is the council on agreement with this date, or would another time be better?
What day was it?
Thursday, Jan- I'm sorry. Thursday, July 19th. It's, okay. It's just normally the third Thursday, but I didn't, I mean, it's a busy month, I know, for people with vacations and trying to eke out that last stuff.
You'll be in town?
I shouldn't be, yeah.
Thank you, I'm John.
Do you want?
I do.
Okay.
I'll be there the 30th before and after.
Can we try not to?
Is that, we're gonna do it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Project updates. Update on the Cherokee Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. The contractor engineer, Mr. James Queen and Mr. David Hamby, met last week to discuss the final details of the project. We should be wrapping things up in the next couple of weeks. The signs for park hours have come in and were replaced, and I'm sorry, and were placed around the parks by Mr. Fossett. That's the park closes at dark with the OCGA on there. They got it right this time. So they're posted around. I completed the last class that I needed to become a certified Georgia Municipal Clerk while down in Savannah last week. I will be able to collect my certificate and walk across the stage in Athens in September at the Clerks Conference if the council approves. I will need to take a certain amount of classes each year in order to keep my certification up to date. I want to thank everyone that's supported me in this journey. And with, I don't, did you want to go over the financial reports tonight, or?
I would, I would want, yes. So she's got her out there. You have an opportunity to review them.
I also wanted to let you all know that I have a, an updated training thing. I gave you all, everyone in your package, so you can review that at your convenience.
And where's that located?
It is behind all the financial reports.
Is that 30 hours every two, every two years?
I have to double check, I'm not sure.
I think that's what.
I think that's what it is.
I think that's what I was told by my own precious Cooper.
Yeah. I know they just did an update, but I'm not sure what that was, but.
Yeah, and it's every two years. So the other thing is, is you get your certification, but before you are a certified clerk, you have to have two years, is that what it said? You have to have two years in position?
No.
You just, well, it depends, because normally it takes longer to get the classes. Yeah. Okay, so you lead the way. Do you want me to go over like I did last time, the financial reports?
Yeah, which one do you want to start with?
The trial balance, would that be easier? That's the horizontal one. This is the one that has the assets and the liabilities and the fund balance information. The same as last month, I went ahead and added the corresponding account numbers and labeled the CDs and circled the balances.
Were you able to find out what the money market was bringing?
No, I didn't. Because they did a complete, they said it was different. They said it was something for the personal money market, but different for the business. And in my, give me one second, I thought I put it in there. Okay, in the part where I'm, in a later section, let me just skip to that and read that real quick. We'll go, we'll cover it again, but just give me one moment. Okay, so, under the non-BAHD information, I'm sorry, that's where I put it. I said I contacted the representatives of Regions Bank that handle accounts such as ours, and they are in the process of doing a full evaluation of our accounts and finances to make sure that we are utilizing the correct accounts and are benefiting in the best way possible. So I was hoping to get that information back before tonight's meeting, but was unable to do so. I did ask them to have it as soon as possible for, so that we could go through it. Because the rates on like government accounts and business accounts and personal accounts vary, and there's certain accounts that apparently you're not supposed to collect interest in, and there's all this law that the people at the branch were semi-familiar with, but they referred us to these specialists in that. So, I was even asked, gonna ask them if they'd be willing to come and speak to the council at the meeting and explain things, if that would be possible. So that has not showed up on this? That cash reserve fund will show up, get the June statement up here somewhere. Okay. And it's listed as a cash reserve fund.
Anybody have any questions?
That had been in there since 1907.
What have?
The general fund.
The general fund.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. And just like I said, it goes through all the SLOSTs and things of that nature, same as before. I'm gonna continue to do this monthly. And then next is the statement of revenues and expenditures, and this is covered specifically the month of May. And this is the purchase of the property on Springs Street.
Which one?
SLOST 2 Pickens, page 10 of that report.
Before, before we get that, just let me guess what was paid out with the 2,379 total? It was paid out, and was it paid out for the Cherokee? You gotta pay out on the.
I'm sorry, what page is that?
This is four.
Of which report?
The trial balance.
Trial balance, okay. One second. You said page four. General fund?
Yeah.
Oh, are you talking about Almay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. So that was the getting balance, the transactions, and we still have 13,66640 in Almay.
All right, where, so that's what we paid out in Almay, was that on, was that on Cherokee Avenue?
Yes.
And where's the 30% at that we paid?
That came out of SLOST. We paid the, give me a second. The amount was over the Almay, the amount that we paid out of SLOST, so it was over 30%.
Was SLOST three?
Cherokee, excuse me, Pickens SLOST two. Site improvements. I'm sorry, may I agree, we're on two different reports, I apologize. I was looking at the page 10 of the revenues and expenditures and raised it down in greater detail. When you get to this point, when you get past the fund balance on this one, this is real generic, the revenues and expenditures. That's why I gave you guys this other one here, the statement of revenues and expenditures, because it has all the, it has a lot more detail, and breaks it down for the month.
Okay, so on page 10. Site improvements.
Yes, ma'am.
Our budget's 19. Current actual's 16.
And this did not include that the invoice for the, the project was paid in here?
Okay. So the 16, 600 was for what?
This is the budget, this is the actual spend. This included part of that, this also included the repairs, I believe the repairs on the roadwork.
The barrel.
Barrel, yes, thank you.
So the big invoice was paid new to, to the contract company?
Yeah, it was the 90% of the invoice, I believe, that we voted to pay. And that was, of course, before the additions that we've made. So 90% of the original. Contract price.
So is it, does it not show any, like a, so this should be like, is this just for a month? It don't show, it doesn't show us any, like if you have a, if you wrote a check out of SLOST for Cherokee County, it doesn't continue to show up there?
I can try to see if there's an additional report for that.
Or if it's, maybe somewhere it should show us what we're spending. Maybe more on just a monthly basis, but also a yearly, so we can see, you know, dollars that we, you know, projects that we've completed.
Yeah, because I mean, on that revenue and expenditures, it has a year-to-date actual. Does that, is that what you're asking for? So go back to page 10 for me on that, just for example. Current budget, current actual, annual, and year-to-date actual, is that what you were asking for?
Even that's only 17,230.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the 30,000 that we paid?
No, because that's, like I said, that's gonna be in the next, it'll show up in the next.
Okay.
And then, excuse me. I also updated this and put that in there, and it's also out there in the audience package as well, if you're interested. I included that this time around. So it's just the reconciled balances for us to own again through the May 31st. With the corresponding account numbers from the trial balance report.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Tina. And then we'll move on to our folks' report, like you guys, Officer Simmons at this time.
You can see, comparison to last month, we've got a few extra calls this month, but that's normal. Call waiting always starts picking up in the summer time. And you can look through the breakdown of calls, the significant ones. On the 3rd, Deputy Jordan located a suspicious vehicle with two occupants at the city park over here by the ball field. He interviewed both parties and released a map variation with trespassing route from being in the park after hours. On the 6th, Agent Carter responded to Hickory Lane to assist fire. We had a 68-year-old female that was experiencing a medical issue that's causing her to possibly hallucinate. She was transported, beaten on the side of the treatment. And that's normal for us to get called to help fire, because they're not, they're not equipped to fight people if they have to. I'm not sure a 68-year-old female's gonna fight him too bad. While he was there, they dispatched Deputy Carter to suspicious vehicle with two occupants in Cypress Cove. They were reported being a red truck with ladders on top, and were supposedly looking in the housing, but the truck was gone by the time he got there. But we did not have any reports of thefts in the area, and there were no other reports of that vehicle in the area. So, maybe they were just looking for whoever they're supposed to be doing the work for and then left, we don't know. On the 12th, Sergeant Cook stopped at a hit-and-run on his way into work, and it turned out the hit-and-run happened in Pickens. So he waited until Pickens SO came and they worked it. And then on the 13th, Deputy Boyd and his trainee were dispatched. Original reports of the cow was, or the calf was down here near the, near Highway 5, but it turned out, Lakers. And then Deputy Winter responded to a missing persons report on Old Nelson Road. The caller was worried his adult son had not returned home from work, he worked over nine hours, and wasn't answering his phone. And sometimes that happens. And so we entered him on GCIC as a missing person. Then later, when he returned home, he ended up with two flat tires and his cell phone was dead. So that's why he couldn't make contact with anybody, and a coworker helped him out and got him home. So those were our significant calls for service. Also, we are in the process of getting updated neighborhood watch signs, and so when they come in, I'm gonna be putting them in the front of the subdivisions and a couple here in the city, too. So we'll have some nice new, pretty signs. Questions?
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Can I get a, can I get a motion for an executive session?
I want a motion to have an executive session.
Second. In favor?
Can I get a motion to close the executive session?
Can I get a second? All in favor? All right. Next, we move to unfinished business. First item is going to be to discuss and vote on how to pay the current invoice for Phase 1 of the Stormwater Improvement Project.
Included with this is the most recent invoice for the work done on the Cherokee Avenue Drainage Project. This includes the additions made after the initial mid-packets, such as driveway, aprons, and whatnot. The original contracted amount was 30,286, and the new amount with the additions is 42,275.15. Since there are some final things that need to be done in order for the project to be complete, the engineer recommended that we pay 7,872.34 now upon satisfactory work completion and final inspection by the city, the remaining 7,145.41. The email recommendations of the engineer is also included in your package. Due to the fact that this is being paid with SLOST, the auditor recommended getting a vote to have a paper trail of how and where the funds are being spent. This will make the end of the year recording easier as well. I'm asking the council to vote to approve the amount recommended by the engineer, which comes to 7,872.34 now, and then the remaining 7,145.41 upon project completion.
Do you have to, on, if you have an open project with open dollars, and the council will have to vote on that? Or just discuss it?
You should probably vote to approve the specific amounts, since she's got them here.
We, we didn't really talk about that. Then James went up there and made one, burnt that tire out, wore it down, wasted so bad.
Oh, okay.
And then they're gonna add aprons to every one driveway, three foot, and these will go back six foot. And they're gonna square up several of them, get them looking a lot better.
Can we pay more?
Yeah.
But especially since it's SLOST and the auditor suggested it, it's worth having them have a document.
Can I get a motion?
On the commission to pay the 7,872.34 now?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Vote on the drainage, the, vote on the change of payment source for the new mower.
At the June 20th meeting, the council voted to approve the purchase of a new mower out of SLOST Parks and Rec. Upon further research, it was found that SLOST, that the SLOST that had a Parks and Rec equipment allotment does not have any funds left in it. The SLOST referendums that do have Parks and Rec money are just for facilities and not equipment, therefore the mower is not an allowable expenditure. Since the city is still in need of a mower and there is money in general fund, I wanted to make the council aware of the situation and ask that they reapprove the purchase with the new payment source.
To add to that, I spoke with Evan this afternoon, and he is interested in bidding on that. He says he has about $3,500 in parts and labor for the.
Already in.
Yeah, already in it, and he would, he would like to do the silver bid. So what do we need, Tina, in order to run that ad?
Just to advertise? I can go ahead and advertise that?
So that's how GF3 made the deal, so we'll be.
Yeah, and he sent a, he sent the lingo to, over to Tina, and I've been emailing her, so she's got all that, and we just advertise it and, and then see who bids. And I think Eric Wilmore, she said was gonna bid, and then he said he would bid.
But this is the, not the sidearm mower, this is the regular mower I was referring to.
No, I was referring, I was referring to the tractor, because the tractor was, we were gonna use.
Oh, okay.
The money if, you know, as either a trade-in or use that money to purchase the mower. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we do that, what, do you remember how long it takes for that to, what was the date on that? Do you have to run it for how many days?
Two weeks.
Was it two weeks?
Take advantage of it.
So it would delay, unless you guys vote, you do vote to pay for the more now, I know one that you were gonna get one back, except you.
Right. Yes, we got plenty of money in there for work, man. I don't see the point. Home dog. That he needs a mower right now.
Yes, he does, that really is fast.
But your price hasn't changed or anything?
No. It's all the same.
So can we get a?
Probably still got, got stock.
Yeah. So can I get a motion to, to purchase the new mower out of general funds?
I make a motion to purchase the new mower out of general funds, just for the SLOST recognition.
Okay. All in favor? Discuss and vote on city positions. Can I get a, okay, security cameras, security cameras are next.
At the June 20th meeting, the council voted to approve an invoice for security cameras for City Hall in the amount of 15,6856. Due to some changes in equipment, the amount has changed. In order to make sure we are on the up and up audit-wise, the council just needs to approve the new amount. When specific amounts are used in a motion, any changes to that need to be voted on and noted, so that when the auditor compares the minutes to the invoices, they match up. So the new invoice is 17,6486. In the future, we can also do, like, up to a certain amount, so if we're, if it goes up, then we don't have to re-vote on it, but because we voted on the specific invoice with the amount, that's where the, the problem came in.
The $230 change, what it is, for the audience. Can I get a motion to approve?
I think I'm motion to approve.
In your mouth? Can I get a second? All in favor? Discuss and vote on city positions. Discuss and vote on city positions. Can I get a motion to no longer fill the role of city manager?
I make a motion to no longer fill the role of city manager.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Like to make a statement to the public at this time. At this time, the council will no longer fill the role of city manager. The responsibilities delegated to the city manager will revert back to the mayor. Per our charter, we will remain a strong council with weak mayor form. Next, our, is new business. Vote to set the 2018 millage rate for Cherokee County side of the city.
Included with this is another copy, I put copies in votes so you don't have to flip back and forth. The PT 32.1 Computation of Millage Rate Rollback and Percentage Increase in Property Taxes, as well as the Current Tax Digest and Five-Year History of Levy. Once again, there are copies of this in the lobby for those in the audience who would like one. As with last year, we are not raising taxes. We are doing a rollback which equals a 0 percent increase. The millage rate that we are looking to approve for 2018 is 0.909. Once this rate is set, it will get set to the state as well as Cherokee County, who will then be able to process our property tax bills as they have in the past two years. Those that reside on the Cherokee County side of the city will not receive a property tax bill from the city. There will be a line item on their county tax bill which will be the amount due to the city. So, in other words, the money will be paid to the county, the county then in turn sends us the money. And this is the way it's been, this will be the third year that we've done it this way, where the county processes, collects our taxes, property taxes.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Can I get a motion to pray? Make a motion to approve the millage rate for Cherokee County.
Take a second, please. All in favor? Thank you. Vote and add another check signer to the... Discuss and vote to approve closing and consolidating some of the bank accounts.
At some recent meetings, there's been discussion about the many accounts that the city currently has. On June 29th, the cash reserve fund was opened. This means that there is no longer a need for the reserve CD or the savings account that are both in general fund. I would like to close those accounts and dissolve that money into the general fund since the 20 percent that our policy requires is now in the cash reserve fund. We also have a Cherokee County SPOLOST 3 account as well as two $50,000 CDs which are costing more than they bring in. I would like to cash out those CDs and move them into the SPOLOST 3 checking account. This is where that information I read earlier was. I have also contacted the representatives of Regions Bank that handle accounts such as ours, and they are in the process of doing a full evaluation of our accounts and finances to make sure that we are utilizing the correct accounts and are benefiting in the best way possible. I was hoping to get that information back before tonight's meeting but was unable to do so. I hope to have it by the next meeting for the council to review. If the council would like, we can wait until after we get this information back before doing anything with the accounts.
Now, I get all the information.
When did she say he was gonna be back in and get ahold of you?
Oh, he's gotten ahold of me, they got all the information, they're just, they're researching and analyzing right now.
Oh, okay. Now, the two $50,000 CDs, if we put them in the SPOLOST account, is it gonna be locked in Cherokee County SPOLOST?
Well, it is Cherokee County.
I saw already Cherokee County.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, it's just that for some reason, they had it split out into two CDs, I'm not sure why. But anyway, I would recommend that based on the work that we're gonna try and get done this year anyway. But we can, if you want to, we can hold off on that until we get all the information and just do it at the work session, can bring it back up then.
Can you change the date of the work session?
Tina, could, we also wanna change the work session date to July 23rd, which is Monday. And then add this back for a revisit after we get all the information back. Next is to vote and add another check signer to the bank accounts. I make a motion to add Chad Green to as a check signer for the bank accounts.
I make a motion for more check, and then the check sign.
And I'll say it.
All in favor? Okay, brings us to public appearance of...
If we close those CDs, will they not penalize us at a certain time, or unless someone finds out?
So, as we're gathering more information, could you find out?
Yeah, we would close them out, well, 'cause when they revolve or whatever, then we would find out the date that they kind of, before they roll over, and then close them out then. They're short-term, so it's not, like, it's a five or ten day one.
What I'll do is I'll try to get you, I'll try to get dollars before the next meeting on what it would cost to close them out of anything. Next up is public appearance, so before I open the floor, please be mindful of our rules and regulations. And with that said, do we have anybody that would like to, how do you say, an hour or two, please?
Well, Mark, hello, 1005 Laurel Avenue, Nelson. And since I missed last week, do I get 10 minutes? I did have some questions concerning the budget, but I know that now with the change in the way the city's gonna be operated, that's no doubt, there's gonna be a lot of, probably big additions to the way budgets process, so I'm gonna hold those until future meetings when I have something that I might be able to talk about. I did wanna bring up one kind of new issue for me. I noticed we have like, a house down here that's been under construction for like, four and a half years. That's really, we all know, it's pretty bad. And I'd like for the council to look into what is our process for requiring a certain timeframe for building construction to be completed, and what are our requirements gonna be for them to keep the site in a clean and neat condition? You know, I know construction's construction, but we have a little broken out truck that's been sitting for years. I did take the opportunity to go and look at Cherokee Avenue before that. The new drainage project has been ongoing. I don't know what phase we're in, whether the dry maintenance or, is that something that you have to be starting?
Correct.
And I did mention that when the silk fences and so forth were put up during construction, sometimes those tend to stay out long after they're needed. And usually, that's to protect the drainage during the construction phase. And once it's completed, like, mostly that's completed except for the dry labor. So, I'd like to kind of bring your attention that at some point, it would be good for someone to really dress up the new street so it can be mowed. It needs overseeing on the shoulders. I'd like to see them, the people living on that street, endure it a long way, and hopefully, this is gonna do them some good. Go an extra mile and kind of dress up the street a little bit, so that it could be one that's constantly mowed and shoulders, and make it really look like something that residents of that will be proud to see it do. Okay, that's all I have tonight, thank you very much for your diligent work on all the ongoing projects and situations that have been going on, so I'll see you again, thanks for your...
Thank you, Mark. Can I get a motion to... All in favor?